Good evening. Welcome to the City Commission Study Session and Special Meeting. Please turn off all cell phones during our study session. All right, first item on the agenda, welcome sign in Fort Metropolitan.
Taylor Tetter, Assistant City Manager, will hand you this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. From the June 27th Commission Meeting, I brought you some preliminary designs of a welcome sign that could be located at Fort and Metropolitan Avenue near the new Town Place Suites and Fairfield Inn by Marriott. And I took your comments and took them to the designer, and they were able to come up with a few alternate designs that maybe suited some of our needs and ideas better. I would like to say, this sign that I have up right now, it is 16 foot wide by approximately 10 or 11 feet tall.
How tall is that wall behind it?
Approximately 14, 16 feet.
16 wide by 11 tall, so this will be shorter than the other one.
It would be slightly shorter, and I think this photo here that I've got up on the screen kind of shows it from a downward angle in the intersection, so...
Okay.
So...
There's a slight rise there in the center.
Right. So, since this is adjacent to the state highway and their outdoor advertising control route, it will have to be licensed as an official sign through the KDOT office, but I'm sure that with our city engineer and myself, we'll be able to reach an understanding with whichever sign we choose.
Okay.
So, this is one of the designs with these couple of buffalo on this sign here. Another sign that was proposed is this option.
I don't like that at all.
It's a little more modern.
Pretty stark.
And then there is this option, again, a little more modern than other signs throughout the city.
And some of these, like, I think that one would look more prominent at night, because I would imagine those blue panels pop pretty well at night, but again, you know...
These would all be lighted, the letters are channel letters, and then I believe there would be other lighting, backlighting.
That's what I was wondering with that first one, if it was, because the way it looks against the wall, it isn't very noticeable unless it is backlit somehow.
Yeah, that's still what needs to be...
So, all of the letters would be, channel letters mean backlit from the letters and...
Is that the north end for City of Kansas?
Yes.
Okay, backlit, not spotlights on from the front.
Right.
Lit inside.
So, it kind of glow.
And so would the design on top, the Constoga and the Cowboy, whatever we did show to at night.
I think there would be a way for them to do that.
Yeah, there's probably enough light in that intersection or street or whatever.
Okay, so, and to review, this is the Fairfield property that they are allowing us to put a sign there.
That's correct. So, on this photo, the sign is located on the actual land of the Fairfield. The right-of-way is right on the other side of that, on the other side of, right here, and then it kind of goes like this.
Gotcha.
So, we did check the plans and had our engineer...
What's that back behind there, a couple of buffalo?
Right, yeah. I think that's a little design aspect they added.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Well, that was one, I thought those were bushes.
It's all up to you guys.
I like how they just did this for...
Our picture is so much darker, yeah.
Yeah, that's up to...
I heard the mayor say, "There's buffalo," and I said, "That's not a buffalo." I was going to say, "It's not a bush."
Yeah, I know, that's what it looks like on mine, yeah, yeah.
And I have heard a few of your comments, you did want to see the city logo on it. This one doesn't have it, perhaps it could go in the center.
No, I think I'm okay with that.
No, it's got enough of the wagon train there on it, and, you know, that's taken from the symbol, I like that, yeah.
It's her logo.
It does, yeah.
It has part of the logo, but I like that it's simpler and cleaner, and you should be able to read "Levmore at a Distance" and "For City of Kansas."
And it fits into the landscape area.
This is kind of what Taylor and Ann and I talked about.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is my first choice here.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, and it's 16 foot wide by 11 foot tall, yeah, let's get some more information on that.
Are there any elements or colors, you know, we're kind of narrowing it down, but we don't, you know, we're not making a decision tonight. Are there any other color elements or design elements you'd kind of like to see? I mean, we get kind of one crack at this, so I want to make sure, any options we want to see, you know, a little extra on design work for something that's going to hopefully be there for a long time.
Well, Nancy had mentioned that the brick on it would be like a similar coloring as the fort to kind of tie that in a little bit, at least a lighter color.
Lighter color.
Lighter colored stone.
Lot of stone.
Yeah.
Which I think it shows there, and that's...
Yeah, that's what it's showing, yeah, there, so, I'm, you know, it would also contrast if, you know, against the wall, too.
But I don't, I don't see any need to add any other design elements to it, I think as simpler, the better.
And as we had talked about, it does kind of play off of the color of the hotel, that lighter shade, and then the dark wall behind it.
Yeah, yeah.
Are the figures on top, the covered wagon, et cetera, are those two-dimensional, like the stockyards down in the old river bottoms, you know, they add them up on them, they have two-dimensional, are they bronze or copper, are these two-dimensional?
Like cut metal?
Yeah, cut metal.
I believe so.
Yeah, not a three-dimensional.
Kind of like the two-dimensional buffalo over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we, I mean, we'll have to get estimates and all that stuff before we take it to the commission, but we can discuss it here and then get some estimates, or did she include that in there?
No.
Do we have estimates in here?
No.
I didn't think there were.
I just got to ask one quick question, do we need it this size if they come up, 16 by 11 is a pretty huge size.
When you're coming over the bridge, and that's the first thing you see, if it's smaller, it might not be as easily readable, maybe a little smaller.
If I can add, if the signs that you see on the highway are deceptive in how big they really are, most of them, like the "No Left Turn" sign on Metropolitan's going to be three feet wide, and you go up to it and you say, "Whoa, I was thinking it seemed kind of small." So, there's a proportional thing, I think, that the sign companies are aware of to make...
Because of all that open space, yeah.
Yeah, they got to figure it out. Yeah, like, the next thing is to, you know, there's just a lot of changes to get a quote, or as far as I'm concerned, that's going to be the defined.
I'd like a quote between comparing actual rock to the, whatever that substance was they were talking about, I'm not something that's going to last, we're going to put this up.
They have a synthetic stone that they use on almost most of their signs.
Might be helpful to use.
Right, as like a cost-effective option, but we can price both out.
Yeah, I want to see how much, how long it lasts, too, how sturdy that stuff is.
Right.
But it would be good to have comparison in that. And then I guess that's on a concrete slab that we're climbing.
And Fort Levmore, but it says, "Fort Levmore since 1827," or words that are fact, except for Metropolitan, is that actual limestone, or is that synthetic, or do you know?
I believe it.
I mean, it looks real, but do you make synthetic stuff?
On the fort, I think that's, at the gate, I think those are real, and they've since cleaned them, too, when they did, yeah.
That's the actual stuff.
Yeah.
Mike says it's limestone, yeah. However, Young Sign Committee did do the Munson Army Center sign, and that is synthetic, if you wanted to see an example of a synthetic sign.
Okay, make a look at that.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think I'll take that information and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Revision to Personnel Policy Manual and Ordinance Repeals.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, at the June 6th Study Session, I brought an item that would move how the city hires and recruits and fills positions to the City Commission a way to streamline our processes, and I mentioned at that time that in order to do that, we had to do some ordinance, repeal subordinances, and then bring to you a draft of what we are going to do, so that's what we're going to do tonight. There's a couple actions that we would have to do, they're not before you tonight, but just to let you know as they will come along. Chapter four, ordinance, chapter four, creating the Civil Service Commission, would have to be repealed. We'd have to slightly revise chapter two because it references the Civil Service Commission, and then we would also have to repeal chapter 82, which is the one I spoke to you about on June 6th. So, those are all measures that we would have to do to move all of those recruiting, hiring and retention practices from Code of Ordinances into the Personnel Policy Manual where all of the rest of our personnel action items are included. One other thing, the very first line of the policy report, in 2012, the City Commission at a study session had a consensus to disband the Human Relations Commission, it hadn't met in 15 years, and that was when we were looking at cleaning up some of the commissions that were inactive, there were nobody on, and stuff like that. I don't know what happened, but the action to actually disband it never came back to the commission at that time, so we figured, we found that, or Carla found that, as we were looking to make sure we got all of the Civil Service Commission references addressed, that we never officially did disband the Human Relations Commission, which was done in the 1960s. So, we're going to bring that as the action to clean up that 2012 consensus from the City Commission.
So, now it's like 20 years since this was met?
Yes. So, those are the, those are the chapter things that will appear before you, you'll see Charter Ordinance for first, because it's a charter ordinance and it has a 60-day time period, but then you'll see the revision to the other chapters and at a later date, probably starting next week.
Okay.
As far as the actual policy itself, Blonde is going to go through that, again, the goal is to streamline and make easier how we hire, recruit, and fill our positions at the city, so Blonde is going to go through some of those changes.
Okay. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, presented in the policy report are several of the different sections within the Personnel Manual that would be added to or revised in order to incorporate some of the items from the chapter 58, Civil Service, to outline, as Paul mentioned, the recruiting, the selection, the application process. So, as you'll see on the policy report, the first one, which was probably the easiest one, section 15 refers to the grievance policy, and what that does basically is just remove the last section, which referred to that last step in the process of the grievance to the Civil Service Commission. Paul would become the final step in the grievance throughout the city process, and then legal action if they chose to pursue beyond that.
Right.
Section eight, the promotions policy, as well as section six, the recruitment policy, selection, appointment, and recruitment policy, both of those are changed in order to reflect, again, the changes from chapter 58 in the ordinance, pulling that information in to outline the selection process, the application process, the rating process. The recruitment process got a little more detailed than what was currently there, you'll see by the italicies, the addition of several different sections, and that was, again, from Paul kind of conferring with some of the different municipalities outside Ken City area, what they've done to kind of streamline the process, and again, provide an easier and more efficient, hopefully, process for getting applications over to the hiring manager. So, that outlines, and again, as he mentioned, we have 60 days for the Charter Ordinance and 30 days for the regular ordinances, so this is draft form, comments and suggestions, more than welcome over the next 30 days to make final revisions to this policy before it comes back for final action. The last two pages, and again, sorry, about four or five pages refer to section six of the policy and adding in several sections to clarify what was in the section 58 for the Civil Service, so that the hiring managers have very defined guidelines to follow. We are currently working on two different forms, which I also think Paul mentioned in the June Study Session, that would have a personnel rec from the starting process and also an after-action follow-up from the hiring manager. We've worked on one of the drafts for the personnel rec, still working on the draft for the after-action report, so those will be coming and attached within this Personnel Policy as well. The section two, the introduction, again, primarily was just an update to take out the Civil Service Commission reference and update to whatever date these changes become effective, I put in October 1, just as a reference, but whatever date these will become effective will be the change to the section two, the introduction, and then two changes to the definitions, again, referring to the Civil Service Commission. So, with these going out, again, draft version being presented for these changes, be more than happy to have any comments, suggestions, revisions sent to either myself or Paul for review and incorporation, before it would be presented, again, after the repeal process of all of the ordinances.
Okay.
And we, as a reminder, we have talked to the Employee Council about this, I did meet separately with Police and Fire, two of our largest groups, to further explain the changes, and everybody seemed to be on board with this. It's designed to get people hired faster and easier, people...
And easier, yeah.
Yeah, so that's our goal with this.
Great, that's good to hear.
And the Civil Service Commission Chairperson was also, we also met with him and discussed with him, and he was very much in support of the changes as well.
Good, that's great.
Yeah, met with them. Met with them.
I was going to say, I'm not even sure I could find them. Okay, well, I'm going to study those and give you any comments. Review stormwater program, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Didn't end very well. Review stormwater program policy and funding sources.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, starting with the City Commission goal-setting in April, we set forth to examine the backlog of dated infrastructure that we have in our stormwater system. Conservative estimates are in the $40 to $70 million range of work of crumbling 100-year-old stone arches and clay tile pipes that underneath the ground right now are failing and causing great expense for emergency repairs. This proactive approach we brought to the Commission for the first time at the May 2nd Study Session, there was consensus at that point to move forward, to start looking at what this would look like for the city, what kind of funding mechanism, what kind of program. We followed that up at the June 6th Commission Meeting with some ideas on how a rate would be set up. We went from a simple sort of complex to a complex calculation, at that time, the Commission had a consensus to move forward with a simple set-rate formula, just a blanket dollar cost per month to employees and businesses, not yet determining what that dollar amount would be, but that that would be the rate structure that we would look at. Tonight, we've gone to the next step in that process, and before you are some discussion points, first one being the collection options. It boils down to two, and we've touched on this at previous study sessions. We could do it in the water department billing, the same bill that you pay your trash and your sewer, you could have, say the number was $2 or $3 a month, you could have that placed on the water bill. The water department does that. Some of the bullet points you'll see here that are relevant, I believe, to consideration is a $15,000 to $20,000 setup fee, 5% of the monthly revenue is a service charge to the water department. We currently pay between $150,000 and $200,000 a year to the water department to outsource our billing. It's a lot of work, I mean, it's a fair rate, it's just a matter of, it starts to add up over time. That option has its benefits, so you spread the costs out over more months, you're not hitting anybody or any business at any one time with a large lump sum, but there are those administrative costs associated with that. The second option would be, and we've discussed this again, would be to place the fee as on the annual property tax statement, which is mailed to the owner of the property. That would be done through the county, there would be no processing fee, there's no startup costs, but that does make a larger lump sum amount at different parts of the year. The other key difference is if you do it on the property tax, that statement goes to the property owner, whereas if you do the water bill, that goes to whosoever the name, the user of the property, you're exactly right. Again, both have their pluses and their minuses, so that's to the Commission for consideration tonight. The second item that we're talking about is sort of to propose, we took that simple rate-fee structure and added a little meat to it, and you'll see those categories listed under the Fee Structure subhead, where we would have a single-family classification, duplex or multifamily classification. We wanted to make it a fair impact to businesses, so we came up with three, a three-tiered structure for businesses, less than 15,000 square foot of a building footprint, those would cover a lot, most of the downtown businesses, the small business, so that would be a lower amount, with a medium and a large one, and the same thing in industrial, but only two levels. So, those are two items tonight. The last thing we wanted to just expose the Commission to tonight, but not look for any feedback, just a review, is we plan on adding a management program to this. I think there's an expectation that should these funds be made available for stormwater, that we'd be ultimately accountable for what we do, how we do it, the progress, so we've taken it to the next step and created a management program that will set about what types of repairs we do, what types of repairs we prioritize, and you'll see some of that on the next couple pages, and we included a draft of that report also in your policy report tonight for you to start looking at and providing some feedback, so that we could have a formalized program and not just add this to funding that we allocate through Public Works to do projects. This would be its own standalone program that we could track much better and get back with what we're doing.
I'm wondering, with something like this, I mean, we know what the problems are, I mean, we know it's going to take money to fix the infrastructure, but I wonder about having a community meeting or something to discuss what our problems are and what the general public thinks it's going to go on their bills.
Right, and we've talked about that extensively, about creating some easels with some photos of our infrastructure problems, setting up some public meetings at the community center or the library, and having staff available to answer questions.
Because I'm sure we're going to hear from property owners when we start charging properties.
Right.
And their taxes, and we're going to hear from users if we start charging users, and I think we just need to...
Yeah, and we've talked...
I think we need to get input from the public.
I think that's a great idea. So, we've come to the point now where I think the Commission has narrowed sort of how it would work a little bit, and we could take some of those finer details and include them in some, in a series, two or three public meetings that we would invite people to, to get kind of some feedback. The problem is undeniable, but then you're asking, you're entrusting the city with, you know, the funds to fix it, and I think, you know, we need to share with how we're going to do it.
Yeah, I just, I just think it needs more public input before we make any decisions.
I have a couple questions. The method, whether it be water bill or property taxes, property taxes have, what, 3% to 5% delinquency rates?
We budget 3%.
Water bills, we have the idea from the water department, the delinquency rate, people tend to react a little bit quicker, you know, if they're delinquent on their water, if they're still living in the place. I just suspect, if it's going to cost the same, it might be easier to do it on the water bill, because your delinquency rates may be less.
You have the ability, I don't know how willing the water department would be, but we know, I know with sewer bills, we have the ability to shut off water, you know, if you do it through that way, I mean, there's that, you know, sometimes you have that hammer, whereas property taxes, it simply goes on unpaid property taxes.
Right, right.
But again, the delinquency rate's usually only about 3%, so...
Well, I know on a water bill, what's your water bills due June 6th, by June 8th, you'll get a letter if you haven't paid your bills.
Right.
They're often, they're pretty strict.
Yeah, we do have a situation on the water bills where they'll pay the water bill, but they won't pay the sewer fee.
Oh, really?
So, then, so then at the end of the year, they may come in and pay the sewer fees, then there's money that has to go back and forth to make up what has been paid and what hasn't been paid.
Oh, we do have a citizen that comes in, right, and tells him that he's checking his trash.
He hand delivers his check.
Yeah. This is mine. I mean... One thing on the water bill, too, if the water is not turned on, they would not get a bill for the storm sewer fee.
Yeah, but if somebody's living there, the water's...
If somebody's living there, the water's turned on.
Yeah.
Another question, would this be considered an enterprise fund?
No.
No, okay. And the next question, let's say we did collect it monthly, pay it two bucks a, you know, a roof pop or something, and say, raise, say that's $25,000 a month, just for argument purposes, $25,000 not going to do much on a, you know, multi-million dollar project, but once we see that, can we use that to bond, to get more money? Because you're, you know, if you get $25,000 a month for 12 months, you know, you get $300,000, and that won't touch much of a project, but there may be something that goes on that we need 3/4 of a million dollars very quickly, could we use that and then bond against that fund or not?
So, there's a reason we hire bond counsel, so I would run any scenarios by them, but if it's, if it's a city general fund money, then you can certainly issue general obligation bonds and identify the funding stream.
Okay.
Now, I would, again, don't want to get too far out of our bond counsel, that's why we have a specialized bond counsel, but certainly, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, and I would think that would depend on if you had like a big emergency need, too, this might need to be in accumulative funds as we whittle down projects or whatever, and similar to the way we've done some of the road projects, too. There's been some years where we've had to save up to do a project, yeah.
But, for example, if we're looking at, if it averages $2 a roof pop, and I'm just grabbing a number here, it's about $25,000 a month, $300,000 a year.
It's going to take a while.
You might wait 10 years before you can, you know, move a somewhat, you know, $3 million dollar project digging up storm sewers, it's not as big as...
Yeah, well, and I think when the mayor was talking about public inputs, that information needs to be part of it, you know?
I understand, yeah.
Like, you're giving an example of, you know, this rusted pipe and kind of an idea of what the price goes with that.
Yeah, we can...
Mike showed it, or...
Yeah, the pictures that we use, yeah.
We can do a project-specific outline of, here was the problem, here's the picture, here's how much it costs.
Yeah.
And you are, you're averaging $100,000 for large storm sewer breaks.
Yeah.
Is what it costs to fix it, no matter who you go with, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that needs to be part of the disclosure to the public and the discussion.
Okay.
I think Mike's estimate on his chart that he's got, depending on what kind of feed that we adopt, roughly is $1,000,500 a year.
Yeah, they're somewhere between $1,200,000 and $1,500,000. We gave you, we gave you a spreadsheet with four different options, the four different cost breakdowns.
And that would be at least six months before you'd be able to get anything.
Yeah.
So, that would give you your initial money to start with. I'm sort of opposed to the bonding, we bond a lot, we like to get out of the bonds, we, about 10 years ago, we made a sincere effort to reduce our debt, and we did for a while, now it's growing again.
I think Mike had, Mike McDonald had, in discussions that we have had, just preliminary, said, you know, maybe the first thing you can do is get rid of all the orange fencing in the community, whatever those orange fences are protecting of these 20, $30,000 repairs that aren't in the budget, you get all those cleaned up, and then you, you know, do a lot and get those out of people's backyards.
I didn't look at that closely, I think.
Yeah, I just received a lot of 1.4.
1.5, you know, which would be...
One of the things that has helped is our GIS system by using the physical sites of the buildings, that's a number that's easily captured from GIS system, and we have identified the number of units and categories on the spreadsheet, you'll see in the small print.
Are those unit numbers fairly accurate?
I think so.
Yeah, these aren't guesses, these are...
No, these are fairly accurate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we will put together some ideas for some dates for some public hearings, or some public meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lead the option of payment, you know, get some...
Some input, yeah.
Feedback on that, also, if they want it on the water bill, which I know is more expensive and more complicated to set up, and/or on their taxes, so...
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, moving on, we need to open a special meeting.
Move, second.
So, we moved and seconded to open a special meeting. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly. Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are now open, second consideration ordinance eighty-fourty-nine vacating the alley
in the First City Hotel subdivision.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, as a reminder, all we were waiting on, from first reading to second reading on this ordinance, was the Ferguson Company coming to an agreement with Spectrum to relocate their service out of that alley for the, and they have done that, and they have provided that agreement to the city, so we saw no reason not to go forward with the second consideration vacating that alley.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on this?
No.
If not, we need to have a roll call vote, please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay, any other items for our discussion tonight, for the session?
Just a couple things, just vacated the alley, obviously, just now, if anyone goes up to Fort Metropolitan, you'll see that the groundwork is starting pretty heavily, right now, there's been a lot of dirt, it's almost six-thirty tonight when I drove by, so that process has started, and I don't know when they'll start, but putting things like that, I'd say a couple months, but I don't know what they have to have done, but that's another addition to the city. I know the mayor, Commissioner Weekly and I, went to the international, the welcome for international students this morning, this afternoon, the community center outstanding job, great job by the mayor, proclamation, handing out honorary citizenship, great job by the city manager, our police chief, and speaking with all the international officers, there are a hundred and twenty of them from, you know, over the east, ninety, ninety different countries, and for those of you who haven't seen that, it's really almost awe-inspiring to see all these officers from ninety different countries all over the world, and our allies, and seeing them interact, and just, maybe I'm the first time ever in the United States, very interesting process, and I laud all the city staff and mayor for what they did, it's an outstanding event, and I think they all enjoyed it.
Thank you, we're honored to have them here, those that live in town, see us on Channel Two, we welcome, welcome all of you. Any other comments this evening?
No.
If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So we moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Pass.